Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters White Bear Lake Forum for candidates running for Madam Edi School Board. There are five candidates and you will elect three, if I'm not mistaken. This forum is not open to the public and is not being livestreamed. It is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel. In addition, local cable stations will replay this forum on a schedule determined by them. Candidates, if for some reason your internet connection is lost, please call in using your phone. I'm Mary Santi. I live outside the district and I will be moderating. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that encourages citizens to participate in their government. While the League studies and takes stands on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or any political party. The goal of our forums like this is for voters to learn more about the positions of candidates who will be on the ballot November 3rd. All of the candidates were invited to participate in the forum. And the candidates who are participating tonight are Lucy Payne, Kelly Reagan. Am I pronouncing that correct, Kelly?
Yes, you are.
Reagan, Stacy Stout, and Tony Vazouni. And candidates will give your opening statements in alphabetical order. And after that, the beginning speaker will be rotated for each question. And closing statements will be in reverse alphabetical order. The timer will show a card when speakers have 15 seconds and then again, when, stop, when their time is up and you may finish your sentence. So Lucy Payne, you may begin your opening statement.
Thank you. Welcome to everyone. I'm happy we can all gather tonight for this opportunity to share our perspectives on Madam Edi Public Schools. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together. Being part of the Madam Edi community means a lot to me. I love connecting with my neighbors when I'm walking, shopping, and at school events and community events. I'm interested in engaging with those around me to learn from all perspectives and work collaboratively to find ways to improve our schools and programs for our learners and our community members. I've been involved in other schools from when my oldest child started in the district. I volunteered in metroplans classrooms, coached Lego robotics teams, supported music and theater. I've served on district committees, attended many district sporting and activities, and enjoyed my time getting to know our teachers, our staff, students, families, and community members. I work with a group of parents to start a foundation to support band, choir, and theater at our high school, and am a member of the Wildwood Artist Series Board. I've been an educator for over 30 years. I've worked with learners from preschool through college. I've been involved with preparing teachers for more than 25 years. My daily work is about schools and learning. In addition, I was appointed by Governor Dayton to serve on our state teacher licensing board. My past six and a half years on the board have been very rewarding and I'm so appreciative of the opportunity to serve. In my board role, I also serve on the Minnesota School Board Association Board of Directors and our regional state high school league sports committee. I feel my background, education, experience benefit our district. Thanks to the White Bear Press for the Voters Guide, I feel like I've already learned from my fellow candidates as I've read each of our statements in the paper. I look forward to our conversation tonight to listen and learn more from everyone.
Thank you. Next to come is Kelly Reagan.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for this opportunity to get together and share our voices. I'm looking forward to hearing more about all of you. I'll introduce myself and that is, I am Kelly Reagan. I've lived in the community of Madam Edi in the Madam Edi Schools District for seven years. I have been involved in education for 24 years, 16 years as a teacher, and the rest of the time beyond the 16 years as an educator professional development specialist. I work with teachers and meet them where they're at and the needs that they have in their classrooms. I work from pre-K to K all the way up through 12th grade, and I support the needs of the students and teachers across the state of Minnesota. I am very much looking forward to learning more about Madam Edi Schools and how I can help support Madam Edi Schools. I've been invested in athletics and academics throughout Madam Edi Schools, serving on the strategic planning meeting team, serving on many athletic clubs and sports. I have served as a head coach. I've served as a football board representative, hockey board representative, and given back to my community as much as possible. I am a mom of four boys who are very involved in Madam Edi Schools, not only the curricular and extracurricular components, and I look forward to learning more about how the rest of all of us can make this the greatest school district that it could ever be.
Thank you. And next up Stacy Stout.
Hi, I'm Stacy. My husband Tim and I live in Madam Edi where our boys attend Madam Edi Middle School. I'm running for reelection to the school board because I believe in public service and I want to build upon the strengths of our great district. As the first person in my family to graduate from college, I know education is the foundation for achieving individual potential. And while I was in law school, I was a Rotary Scholar where I grew as a leader through service to others. And as an attorney for 20 years, I have always put service at the center of my career. I understand the importance of solutions-oriented approach when addressing challenges and needs in our district. And while we're looking at those needs, I think in addition to ensuring that the district stays the course on efficient use of school funding, the school board needs to champion our district's strategic plan, which lays out the goals for students to learn without barriers and to pursue their passions as agents of their own learning. We must ensure that these goals are attainable and our students are developing lifelong skills. And with our district's academic excellence and our strong student and community engagement, including a support for emotional, social and emotional growth, our graduates will be well-prepared for post-secondary success. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and I look forward to our conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Tony Vazouni.
First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and for everyone at home watching this. This provides a great service to this community. I also want to thank all the other candidates for joining us tonight, and I look forward to the great discussion we're going to have about our schools. I've always believed that communities don't just happen, but are built by caring, committed individuals. As a stay-at-home parent with two elementary kids attending OHA this year, I have put in numerous volunteer hours to help make a positive impact on the Zephyr community. I'm a past president of the Elementary PTO, and I continue to volunteer on various committees. Prior to being a stay-at-home parent, I have used my chemistry degree to work doing cancer research at the University of Minnesota, teaching math and science at a charter school in Milwaukee, and as a technical sales manager. All of these experiences have required using evidence-based problem solving to meet the needs of stakeholders. I have used my problem-solving approach in the schools as part of the curriculum advisory committee, Madam Edi District Administration Task Force member, and as a community member of the district's strategic planning team. I look forward to continuing this evidence-based problem-solving approach to positively impact our Zephyr community and see our district's strategic plan come to fruition to benefit all of our students.
Thank you. We will now turn to questions. And the questions were solicited from the public on our LWV email. And after all candidates have answered a question, raise your hand if you would like a rebuttal, and we will ask as many questions as possible in the time allotted. So the first question is going to go to Kelly Reagan, and the question is, how would you define the role of school board member?
All right, so I will lead us off on this. So I would define the role of the school board member as a representative who supports the people that it serves. So I believe a school board member is someone who is passionate about education, someone who's invested in the success of the school district, and is a good listener, someone who is able to take a fresh approach and sometimes even a hard approach at solving problems and being very open-minded to new solutions, and also being rooted in the practices that have founded a school district that has made it serve its people for so long and been successful. So that's what I see as a role of a school board member. I see that we help serve and are the voice of the people that we represent.
Thank you. And next to go is Tony Vazouni.
I believe the role of the school board member is going to be advice and oversight. I think back to when the pandemic hit last year and watching the OHA morning meeting and they kept playing how far we'll go from Juana, and I see us as kind of being wayfinders. We're the ones that are going to be dipping our hands in the water, making sure we're going the right way as a district. By listening to the community, to the teachers, staff, students, especially the students, to make sure we're going in the way we want to go, and then going to our leader, Superintendent Barb Dufferin, and having the oversight to ask the tough questions to make sure that the way, the direction we want the schools to go is actually happening. She's the captain of our ship and she has to take the time to make sure that she's going the way that we need to go.
Thank you. And Lucy Payne.
Thank you. The question I want to reiterate was, how would you define the role of a school board member? So I agree with my colleagues, and this is what I love about this forum, is that we have lots of good ideas between us and our answers overlap. I believe what's missing and what we've talked about so far is the idea of learning. We are learning leaders in terms of thinking about the decisions we need to make. There's going to be a lot of information we need to learn through our experiences, and that community input is very, very important. Teacher input, student input, and that oversight piece of budget and resources in order to have the best academic and social outcomes, wellness outcomes for our students. So I see us as a very important piece that connects community, schools, and students together. And with our community ed programs, also reaching out to the community-based programs that we have in coordinating, working with our community ed department to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our entire community. Thank you.
So I don't see Stacy Stout on the board anymore.
Yes, she disappeared. I'm going to call her. I don't know what appeared. I'm admitting her as an iPhone.
Okay.
Hi Stacy.
Stacy, you are up, and you have, the question was, how would you define the role of school board member?
Okay, thank you. The challenge is of technology. So I'm using my phone now, so hopefully I won't get disconnected. So sorry, I had to cut out there. I did get to hear Kelly's answer and part of Tony's, and I think I agree with both of what they said. Obviously, as an elected board member, we are the voice of those who live in this district, and so that's an important piece of it. I think we're also there to oversee the budget of the district and make sure that we are using the money in the most efficient way possible to serve the needs of all the students in the district. And also, we set policy for the district, and that's really important, and as we've talked about already tonight and has been mentioned, is our strategic plan. And our policies do align with the strategic plan, which had input from our entire community. So those are really the main roles of the board, and I find it very rewarding to participate in all those perspectives.
Thank you. Is there any further that anyone want to add? Okay, we'll go on to the next question, and the first to answer will be Stacy Stout. To what extent do you recognize inequities in our district as related to students, programs, buildings, et cetera? What are short and/or long-term ways to address it?
I think unfortunately, we do have equities within our district. I think there are a number of areas that we have the potential for improvement. A couple that come to mind as far as academic are in our reader, our learners who maybe have reading challenges or need that individualized support. I know that we saw, especially right now during this pandemic, a lot of challenges because of the distance learning. And a lot of students have individualized needs. And as a district, we feel very strongly about meeting each student's needs so that there can be personalized learning. And that's where we really have an opportunity to grow, is to ensure that each child is being, those needs are being addressed, because it will look differently. And I think we have a number of challenges across other areas that need to be identified, and the long-term goal is ultimately that we shore up those inequities. But I think the short term is to figure out what those barriers are, identify them, have conversations, honest conversations about them, and then take steps towards addressing them.
Thank you. Next to answer is Kelly Reagan.
Okay, so can you repeat the question to me so that I make sure to answer both parts?
To what extent do you recognize inequities related to students, programs, buildings, and what are short and long-term ways to address that?
So I'll just state that this is the number one reason why I want to run for school board, and that is about making this equal access for all of the students in Madam Edi Public Schools. I feel as though there are potential inequities across different groups, racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, different gender groups, things like that. And so some of the things that I see is not only with academics, but also maybe extracurricular offerings and the way that students can belong to those. So first of all, I believe short-term solutions, I see that first of all, one of the obstacles in, especially in the pandemic or distance learning, has been inequitable access to technology and not just providing a device, but to internet. And so we're already putting kids behind the eight ball when they don't have access to the internet. Second of all, I see that we need to partner short-term with families. We need to offer support to families during distance learning and long-term solutions. We have to absolutely take a look at our programming for kids in the middle. We've got amazing gifted programs, and we have to focus on possibly some of those pieces, those kids in the middle.
Thank you. Next up is Tony Vazouni.
You got it. I agree, there is definitely inequalities in our district, whether you want to look at it in terms of race, gender, socioeconomic, they all exist. I don't think it's unique to Madam Edi, but sometimes we have the privilege of hiding those inequalities unless you're in the schools looking for them, sometimes it just doesn't come top of mind. We're going to do better as a district when all our students succeed, whether that's a student with an IEP that needs extra help reading, math, whatever it is, if it's our gifted and talented students that need to be challenged more. There's ways of doing this, and we need to look at what the best practices are in education. Research is coming out every day with better and better practices, and we need to get those things implemented into our schools. That can go through teacher training, teacher education, and all these things need to come together, because we're all going to rise together when we all work together.
Thank you. Last to answer, Lucy Payne.
Thank you. So I'm going to add to what my colleagues have said. I agree with what they've said so far about the gaps. They're there, we know they're there, they're there across many different ways. There's many different ways to identify those gaps, but we need to continue to learn about what those gaps are, why they're there, and then educate ourselves. We've done a good job in dipping into books and readings and things like that, and our next step is really moving to action. And so we need to take what we've been learning about and move that to action. The school board has been doing book studies and different things to understand some of these gaps, not all of these gaps. I think the most important thing for us to do is really move towards that personalized learning goal. So we start to look at each individual learner, and we start to look at them from an asset perspective and not a deficit perspective. We continue to look at our learners of how they're broken or how they're not achieving. We need to look at how they are achieving and continue their growth and help them build from where they are at this point in time to reach those academic outcomes and social outcomes that we hope for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have something further to say? Okay, we'll go to the next question, and the first to answer is going to be Tony Vazouni. And that, what do you hope to accomplish during your term if elected?
My focus, if elected, for the school board is to make sure our strategic plan comes to fruition. About a year and a half ago, a group of 30 people that were a cross-section of the community got together as a planning team, and hundreds more worked together as an action team to come up with a strategic plan, which is our goals and vision of who we inspire to be as a Madam Edi School District. It's the number one goal of what we need to look for and achieve so that all our students can actually achieve their personal success.
Thank you. Next one to answer is Lucy Payne.
Thank you. So I'm going to build from what Tony said. I agree 20, 100% that strategic planning process was very important to who we are, where we want to be, and was done by a community, the community, not just board members, not just teachers, but lots of involvement from many people, and that should be our most important piece that we work towards. I think we also have to have a large focus on the inequities that we have in our district and making sure we continue to address those and find others that we haven't seen yet, because there are others we have not identified, I believe. Finally, I think our next biggest challenge I hope that we can accomplish during this time is to really advocate at the state Capitol for equitable, reasonable, fully-funded schools. One of our biggest challenges is funding, and it has to do with the state model of how districts are funded, and we're on the edge of a fiscal cliff that is very concerning to us as a board historically, and we need to make sure we're working to advocate on behalf of our students.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Reagan.
Thank you. So the things that I would like to really focus on are a lot of things that my colleagues have said up here as well. Focusing on equity is definitely something I'm very passionate about in all of the academics and extracurricular. I really also truly believe that following through those action steps of the strategic plan, seeing that out, and also adjusting and modifying and looking further beyond that strategic plan, what comes next. And the last thing is, when Lucy mentioned the funding, our teachers have had to do more and more and more with less and less and less for a long, long time. This has been happening for decades. And how can we adequately fund the needs of our students and our teachers so that they can do the job that they are trained to do, and our students can learn the skills that they need to take the jobs that they're going to be leaving our school system with? We have to prepare them for the jobs that don't exist yet. We have to prepare them for the skills that employers are going to be looking for, and those are the skills that I want to focus on, those real-world skills that our employers are looking for that were different maybe from 20 even 30 years ago.
Thank you. And finally Stacy Stout.
Well, I think that we are all in agreement. There are, I think we all want to really see our students have some opportunities that will lead to lifelong skills. I also really want to see student engagement and community engagement, which is also aligned to our strategic plan. I think especially now, given this pandemic that we're all living through, this piece of engagement is especially important. It's important to help identify individual needs of students, mental health needs, barriers, inequities. And so that's an important step that we really need to grow within our district. I think it's an important goal, and we're taking steps toward it, but we have a way, we want to keep going, we want to keep growing that. I think Lucy also touched on funding, which I completely agree with. We've been a very resourceful community. We've made the best use of our school funding, and I hope that we'll continue to do that, make efficient use of that funding so that those dollars stretch as far as possible so that we're serving every student and helping every student find their passion and meet their potential.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone have something more to add to this? If not, we'll go to the next question, and the first to answer this one will be Stacy Stout. What do you, what steps do you think the district needs to take to protect students and staff from COVID-19?
Well, that's a very important question. We have discussed that several times as board members at our meetings, and we've had a lot of community input. Obviously, the health and safety of our students and teachers is the most important thing that we have to consider right now as we are, as we're supporting students and teachers in their face-to-face learning. We want to make sure that all of the best practices are in place so that all the health standards, all of the masks, the safety equipment, all of those things are provided, which we are doing, and we want to make sure the ventilation is meeting those standards. So we have followed all of those guidelines. We've asked those questions at the board meeting. We have excellent administration and staff who follow through on all of this. And obviously, that's what we want to make sure of as we are ensuring that there is still academic rigor and engagement with students. So it's a big challenge, but I think our district has done an excellent job to take it seriously and address the needs appropriately.
Thank you, Stacy. Next to go is Kelly Reagan.
So first of all, this is by far, I think, in the moment, this is our most pressing need, and we can't have school if we don't have our students and our staffs in a safe place. And so I think that Madam Edi Schools is doing a fantastic job. I've been impressed daily with the things that they're already doing, keeping the schools where the students are wearing masks, of course, the teachers are prepared to adjust as needed. I think that we have to make sure that the teachers have tests if needed. We need to make sure to adjust our schedule based on the numbers. We need to take a look at what's happening and the trends, and if needed, we might need to make a change. And the change might be positive, where we're, you know, taking a positive step towards getting back to what you would call quote-unquote "normal," which I don't know if there ever will be a normal again, but getting people back together in the building, but it also might be more distance learning. And when that happens, though, we do have to deal with the fact that not all students are going to learn the same way in this type of environment, and so we have to take a look at the pieces that are maybe missing and gaps right now because of COVID-19 so that we can help those students and those families, because we don't want those students to fall further behind because of a pandemic.
Thank you. Next to answer is Tony Vazouni.
I also agree that the schools have been doing a great job with this pandemic, and I have to thank the state for their hard work, letting the schools do the work that we're supposed to do. We're going to follow the lead of the scientists, and Minnesota is probably one of the tops things with their school safe plan, following the science of COVID. And I'm a big believer that if we follow the science and let the scientists that we're partnered up with help the administration make the right decisions for our families, we're going to be better off. On that note, it is going to be a challenge going forward with education. We're going to have to work hard to see if we can get our numbers down as a community, which is a community problem, so our students have the chance to be in person, so our high schoolers have a chance to have a graduation. So it's kind of more than just our schools itself, but it's a community, and we just need to make sure we're communicating out to the community what they can do to help make sure our schools and our students can succeed as much as possible.
Thank you. And the question goes next to Lucy Payne.
Thank you. I'm going to reiterate what my colleagues have said. I want to thank the administration especially for all their hard work this summer. Our administrators worked very hard all summer trying to figure this out as of the evolving situation, very dedicated, and now we're hoping they take some vacation time and regroup. Health and safety of our students is our number one priority. You can't have learning without health and safety first. I believe we need to follow the science, and the science is still growing, learning, changing, and that's hard for us and hard for our communities, but it's an important piece to realize that the science behind COVID-19 could change and we'll need to respond appropriately. I appreciate the partnership we've had with Minnesota Department of Education, Minnesota Department of Health, because they help guide us and give us best practices that we need and we're to have our buildings open as much as we possibly can for students. Our school nurses have worked extremely hard to also support the work that's being done. I think it's important during this time that we have ongoing clear communication to our community, and that has happened because we've got excellent staff in this area, and our building principals have been doing that communication. Finally, I do want to...
Thank you, Lucy, time. But everyone has time for rebuttals, so Kelly Reagan.
So I wanted to add on to all the things that have already been said, and that our schools are doing a fantastic job, but we have to extend that to the home, and we also have to extend that to the athletic fields and the things that are happening outside of the school day, because if the schools are the only ones that are really taking the measures, we have to educate the parents and the families and the community so that we can have the opportunity to go back to school, whether that's hybrid or face-to-face. So I, you know, encouraging the learning to go on beyond just the school walls.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to the next question. The first to answer is Lucy Payne. Last year, a rival sports team was subjected to racial taunts from Madam Edi students at a home game. In response, the district said it intended to have restorative conversations where the students can discuss the events of the game together, understand that impact, and learn from each other. Are you satisfied with that response, and what role should the school board play in incidents such as this? And Lucy Payne is the first to answer.
Thank you. So anytime we're dealing with students, we have data privacy laws, which makes it very hard for us to discuss some of the details around some of these cases. And so unfortunately, there are a lot of things that have happened that cannot be discussed publicly because of student privacy laws. So I am satisfied with all the things that have happened around this issue, but I still believe that we can do more. There's always more that we can do. There's always more that we can do. I think that our administrators have addressed this with our students and continue to address this and have this experience to help...
I think it's lost again.
See, hopefully she'll unfreeze here in a second.
Oh, is it Lucy that's wrong?
It's frozen.
I'm not sure.
All right, Lucy, you got interrupted.
I'm not sure what point I get interrupted.
If you want, go back to the beginning, and we'll give you the minute.
Okay. Could you repeat the question again then for me? You threw me off there with all the technological...
I may abbreviate it a little bit.
Yeah, that's great.
And the question was, are you satisfied with the district's response, and what role should the school board play in events like this?
Okay, thank you. Sorry about the technological glitch. So when we have things with our students, we know there are federal laws and state laws that don't allow us to discuss things because of privacy laws. And so there are a lot of aspects of the incident that happened last year that cannot be discussed publicly. I'm very satisfied with the reaction and quickness that our administrators, teachers, coaches, and others responded to this incident and continue to address the underlying issues of racism at our schools. There's always more that we can do. The role of the board has been in these issues to be informed and then to take action where we need to. So we look at our policies on a regular basis. I've talked to our superintendent a number of times about this, trying to understand the situation, and have been given additional information that cannot be shared publicly, as I said, because of data privacy. Unfortunately, this makes it look as if we have not done enough at times. However, behind the scenes, we know a lot more is happening than we can share.
Thank you. And next to answer, Toni Vazouni.
Technology, yay. First of all, racism in any form is unacceptable, and I just want to get that out there. In terms of the specifics of this incident, I have no details beyond what was publicly reported and shared through the community. It's something we have to address, and I do believe in restorative justice. I think it is a good practice for students to learn how to correct their mistakes and become just and find solutions that will repair the damage that they caused. I think that's a good practice and a life lesson for them and a skill that they can use further in life. In terms of details, the board, I would want to be an informed board member and talk with the administration to see what we can do, not just in one incident, but how we can tackle any underlying racial issues that are intentions that are in the community.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Reagan.
So I want to say I respect the district a lot for the way that they handled the situation from what I knew as a community member. Obviously, not being a board member, I only heard what I heard as a community member. So I respect the efficiency of handling the topic that was addressed at that time. I do think there's opportunities for further education. I do think that there's an opportunity for taking a look beyond this incident, right? There's inequities for race, there's inequities for ethnicity, stereotyping, things like that. And so how can we bring community together for community forums? How can we educate the community so that we all can be better? Because we all have room to grow. Every one of us has a place to grow, and so we're only better together. And I think the more that we take a look at the fact that we have room to grow and further this education beyond this incident, and how can we grow to be a stronger community, is going to help all of the students, it's going to help all of the community members. And so based on what Toni and I both know, or little what we know, I'm very happy with how the district handled that.
Thank you. And Stacy Stout.
Well, I obviously agree with what has been said by my colleagues, and Lucy did explain very well why there were certain details that were not shared because of student data privacy. I really was impressed with the way the administration handled the situation. Not only did they handle that event, but they, in a way, that it brought about healing, and it was an opportunity for healing, but they also looked at it and said, how can we use this as an opportunity to better ourselves going forward? Because as was mentioned previously, we can do better, all of us, and it was, I was so happy that we, while we had, while we went, while it was not an incident that any of us wanted to see, we took it and saw it as an opportunity to grow as a better, grow better as a community.
Thank you. Anything more to add, anyone? Lucy Payne.
I want to thank Toni so much for his beginning comment that's most important that we should all begin with is racism is not acceptable in our community. So Toni, I thank you for that comment and the way it was front and center in your response.
Anyone else? We'll go to the next question, and it will start with Toni Vazouni. As a board member, you represent all constituents in the district. In light of the fact that not all households have children in the schools, how do you plan to engage the public about schools and their future?
That's an excellent question. A lot of our public community doesn't have children in the schools right now. We have to be accessible. We have a great community ed program that does actually involve a lot of these families in our community, and taking time to look at those programs and how we can meet their needs as adult learners is a good start. Also, being active and inviting them to community events. There's no reason they can't attend a football game. There's no reason that they can't come join us during the prom or graduation events for our students. This is a community celebration for all these things, and they should be invited to participate. And if there are problems going facing the community, they're always welcome to reach out to me and contact me and have a discussion on what their concerns are. I think it's always good to have an open mind and open ears and see what this community needs. That's our job as a school board member.
Thank you. And the question goes next to Lucy Payne.
Thank you. I agree with Toni. The community ed piece is really important. We have a number of events. We have a monthly luncheon that I often attend to meet with people in our community who I don't see through the usual school routes. I think that listening is very important, and there are lots of ways to do that, being active in the community, attending community functions like Pumpkin Mania and other things that are coming up that are more community events and not necessarily school events. We've been working very hard to invite our extended community into our arts and music programs to allow them to come to those kinds of things, in addition to those sporting events, to engage them in our schools. But remember, we're a school district, which is more than just schools. It's that community ed piece that I think is so important, and I think we have had two really great community ed directors recently, Kathy Ryland, who's just retired, and now currently Kate Anderson, are doing a great job engaging our community, making sure everyone is welcome in our buildings and through lots of different experiences.
Thank you. Next up is Stacy Stout.
Well, I think this is a great question. I think our community is what makes our district so great, and the board, my fellow board members love to tease me because I serve as our representative on the Community Ed Advisory Committee, and I have such a passion for it that sometimes they tease me a little because I love the programming we have through that venue. And I, in addition to that, though, I think our community is a really important piece of the learning for our students, and that was really identified in our strategic plan, that we wanted community engagement so that our students experience what it means to be a part of a community, to learn what service is, and also gain some real-world learning and get those life skills so that they are prepared for the future workforce. So all of those things tied together, I think, are an important piece, and I believe we can continue to grow in that effort.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Reagan.
So this question is exciting to me because this is something, another reason why I'm really passionate about wanting to run for the school board, and that is involving the community. Our pandemic has given us a lot of unfortunate circumstances, but has also opened up a lot of opportunities, just by the fact that we don't have to be in the same room right now to be able to have this conversation. We can invite our community to not only things happening in our schools, not only happening around, you know, our town of Matamidi, to be involved in, like you said, our community is what makes this great. It makes our school district great. We have so many opportunities to partner with businesses, partner with elderly who are retired, for students to engage in real-world learning. And if students can learn from somebody working who's an engineer and those engineering skills, this is where I'm really passionate about as well. Stacy, I think that that's amazing that you're working with community, because that is what makes us so great, and we have a great opportunity, and this pandemic has opened up a whole new world for us to engage our community.
Anything further? Everyone's answered. Toni Vazouni?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Kelly and Stacy were saying, but those partnerships that we can form with community members to give opportunities and educational experiences that you can't get necessarily within the school building itself is a valuable insight, and you can only do that if you work together and know your community.
Anything further? Kelly Reagan.
And we have so many great businesses to partner with and so many community members that I believe would be very willing for this partnership as well, that, thank you, Toni, for saying that. I'm really excited about seeing any or all of us on the school board engaging that community.
Anymore? Okay, go to the next question, and it will begin with Kelly Reagan. Do you see any problems with lack of racial diversity in the district? And please explain your answer.
So problem, I guess I would see that we have an opportunity. I think we have an opportunity to welcome more people into our community, and so I hope to see more as far as representation of all different types of people. And I, and another question is specific about race. I would love to see that expanded to ethnic groups. I'd love to see that to LGBT. I'd love to see that to groups of people that maybe felt as though this wasn't a place for them, and that I want them to feel as though this community is a place for them, that this is a place where if we can provide, we have limited housing in our area. We all know that everybody's clamoring for a piece of land in Matamidi. There's hardly a piece in Matamidi, Delwood, and so on, that's really open. But how can we provide opportunities for additional housing in Matamidi that brings more families here? How can we increase open enrollment so that we can bring other families to Matamidi? And I believe that instead of a problem, I'd like to see that we have a great opportunity in front of us.
Thank you. Next to answer, Stacy Stout.
Well, I think Kelly had a great start to that question as seen as an opportunity. I think diversity is what makes us stronger. It enhances opportunity and creativity and collaboration because you bring back, you bring different backgrounds, and we learn from each other and become such a better society and better community. So I guess I would agree that it's really an opportunity that we should look for opportunity, look for when there's opportunities to increase that, but at the same time, just take what we have, to take the community we have and really embrace who we are as a community.
Thank you. And the next to go is Lucy Payne.
Thank you. Kelly, thank you for starting us off on such a positive note with this question. I agree that it's about opportunity, about welcoming all people to our community, to our schools. And what builds from this, to me, the biggest issue the school board can tackle with this is the diversity within our teaching force. We know our teaching force in the state is very white and very female, and the more we can diversify our teaching force will make an impact on our students of color, and I think that's important, that they see people like them in roles of teacher, administrator, staff throughout our community. And so I think that's the biggest place we can have an impact as a board.
Thank you. And the last to go on this question, Toni Vazouni.
I agree with all the other candidates and their answers, but one thing I think that we can focus on is making sure our students feel they have a place at home in our schools. They need to have an adult, whether it's a teacher, staff member, that they can have a bond with and have a relationship with other students, that we can form groups and have this open discussions, because these are real issues that they're facing amongst diversity, as they're trying to find their own identity. And getting into the schools as school board members and listening to these students and figuring out real solutions that we can provide for them to help make sure that everyone has a home in this, in our schools, in this district, especially our students.
Anything more to add? Kelly Reagan.
So Lucy, I really appreciate your comment about seeing themselves in, you know, as far as, let's say, for example, someone who's African-American, seeing African-American principals and teachers and so on, and seeing women in those leadership positions and things like that. But I also think we need to go another step and see themselves in the curriculum as well. And so we need to take a look at the curriculum that's being taught, and how can we have them represented in the content that they're learning about, and how can they bring their life experiences to that as well? And so the technology right now is an opportunity for them to be able to do that. We have, I got the stop sign.
Finish your sentence.
We have the tools in front of us, and now we need to find the ways to do that.
Thank you. Anyone with further comments? We'll go to the next question. Toni Vazouni is the first to answer this. What have you done as a parent or district resident to demonstrate your support for Matamidi Public Schools?
Well, thank you for that question. I've done a lot. I've worked a lot ever since I moved here seven years ago, and my eldest daughter started in preschool. I sat on the early childhood advisory committee, and I moved on to volunteer in classroom. I was president of our elementary PTO. So I understand the elementary schools inside and out very well, and I bring that perspective to the board if I would sit on it. I'm quickly going to be approaching the middle school years, as my fifth grader will be in middle school next year, and I will be in there learning that school and that system as well. But I also have a perspective of the entire district, because I was invited to sit on various committees throughout the district, particularly the curriculum advisory team. And that has given me a good role of how we go through our curriculum and look to improve. We're a school district that believes in constant improvement, and I look to continue that as a school board member.
Thank you. And the question goes next to Lucy Payne.
Sorry, I dropped my pen. I'm sorry, friends, I'm muting there. In looking at how I've supported the schools, like Toni, I've done a lot of volunteering in our schools, and that was a good way to get to know our buildings, our principals, the students, the staff, in that I have started some foundation, as I mentioned earlier, to support music and theater at the high school level. But most importantly, I've supported my own students, and I've supported their teachers in the work that they're doing with kids. I've respected their expertise in order for them to make the best decisions in the context that they have, and have worked with them to make sure that all students have the opportunity to learn. As I've heard from my students, things are working for them and not working for them, and worked in partnership with people in the district or my students, but then other students as well. Thank you.
And next up is Stacy Stout.
Well, I've been very engaged in the district and the community for the past 10 years since my children were babies. I, of course, mentioned the Community Ed Advisory Council, which I have just loved because there's so many aspects of the community that that touches on. I've also been very engaged in volunteering in the schools with my kids, volunteering on Lego League team coach, the GT Committee Advisory, so a number of opportunities as a school board member. And obviously, being on the school board, there are so many openings that you become aware of that we take, that I take advantage of. So those are some of the big ways. I've also been very supportive of MATH, which I think is an important support to our district in the funding for grants and other opportunities for teachers. So I think in addition to being involved in the district, I've also been very engaged with the city as I served on the Finance Commission that advised the city council. So I feel like that I'm, oh, sorry, I, sorry, since I'm on my phone, I can't see the sign.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
My technological difficulties continue.
We'll tell you then when your time is up. All right, next, Kelly Reagan.
So I have supported my own children and the teachers that they have had over the years. I sometimes get accused of volunteering too much in the schools and the community in Matamidi, which I think is a fabulous problem to have. So like I said, I have four boys, and I have served on the strategic planning team. I have volunteered in classrooms. I have sat and had long conversations with teachers at conferences to meet the needs of my own kids. I've always been supportive of the teachers and their decisions, and it's been a great partnership. I've built some amazing relationships and friendships just by supporting the Matamidi Schools. And I have served outside of the academics. I've served in the football board. I've served on the, I currently serve on the hockey board. I'm a hockey coach. I'm the only female hockey coach in all of Matamidi hockey boys' teams, and I attend all conferences. I go to open houses. I'm always present. I'm just very present and supportive of Matamidi Schools because they're doing great I'm just very present and supportive of Matamita schools because they're doing great things. And I want to show my kids that it means a lot to me. And so I show up for everything, band concerts, everything that they're involved in.
Thank you. And that's everyone. Anything more to add? Okay, you had a very, very complete biographies there. I'm impressed. This will be the last question then, and it will go first to Stacy Stout. Why are you the best candidate for the board?
Well, I have to say that's a tough one because we've got some great candidates. We've had a great conversation tonight, and I really appreciate all the perspectives and the dialogue tonight. I really believe in public service, and I have really enjoyed serving on the board for the past four and a half years. My, as I mentioned, my kids are in the middle school, and I feel like I have a lens that is unique in the sense that I know what their experience is like, our experience. I'm engaged with the administrators in that building and the teachers. And I really have a passion for seeing students across the board reach their potential and be given the opportunities that we want to see every child have.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Regan.
So we have a great panel here, and this is a tough question. I believe that I provide some unique experiences and maybe a fresh approach to the school board that I would love to bring some new ideas. I would love to also help solve problems together. So I believe I'm a team player that works for the better good. And so I think that, you know, my relationship ability is something that has served me well in my own career, my own personal life, and I would like to bring that to the school board. The ease I have with building relationships, I think, will help with bridging the gap between the school board, the teachers, the principals, and all of the community. And I also have the technology experience that we're in the middle of a pandemic right now, and our teachers need support around what are best practices for utilizing technology. And I can provide some perspective on that and some resources. So I'm excited about this opportunity, and thank you for your time. I think we have a great group of candidates here.
Thank you. The question goes next to Lucy Payne.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues. This is a hard question. And I look at this as a hard question because I hope people look at the board as a whole entity and that individual board members. No single board member makes a decision by themselves. It's a combination of people who sit on the board together, who work together collaboratively to make decisions, and that's important. So we're looking for a board that is high functioning. And I think I can contribute to a high functioning board in order to solve problems and find opportunities for our students in our district. I think it's important that our board members have interest in policy. I have done a lot of work in policy in the school district and in other venues. I think background in funding and understanding how funding for schools works is very important at this point in time. Both experiences I have, I think it's also important that we are connected to the larger education world, not only within Minnesota, but nationally. And we have been able to do that through a number of different board members and different things, and I bring that with me as well.
Thank you. And last to go, Toni Vazouni.
I agree with the other candidates, and I really don't envy the voters. I think it's going to come down to perspectives and how we want the community to build the board. And a strong school board is going to have a strong cross-section of the community. And I know I bring a good voice to our elementary schools, which I think the board currently lacks. I also know I have a proven track record of building solutions, creative solutions. And in the school with lack of funding, sometimes it's just opening up those ears and listening, working with the teachers, going, what's not working? And you can find creative solutions all the time. Sometimes it doesn't even cost dollars to do those creative solutions. It just takes an open heart and open ears and working together to bring people together to make the schools all better. So good luck voters. I hope you have all the information you need. If you don't, track us down. We're all open, we're all available in the community.
Thank you. Anything more to add on this last question? If not, we'll turn to closing statements, and the first to go is Toni Vazouni.
Well, thanks for having us here tonight. But I think it's important to remember that this pandemic we're currently facing has demonstrated how vital schools are to our community. It has been a challenge to continue on with student learning while maintaining safety standards. It is good to remember that with challenges comes opportunities. Our school board has the opportunity to make great leaps forward with this district's strategic plan. For example, you could not think of a better experiment than to have schools reshape how education is delivered overnight to address how we can learn and teach without barriers. Our Zephyr community, filled with amazing staff, teachers, administrators, students, families, and community members, is ready to face the challenges ahead. As a member of the school board, I will work to benefit all of our students so that when their time as learners in the district is complete, they possess the tools, skills, and strategies to be bold agents in their own lives, pursuing their passions so they can make positive impacts in their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Stacy Stout.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in this forum. As I have shared in our conversation, I'm running for reelection because I want to serve in our community, and I'm committed to seeing our district sustain academic excellence. As we approach learning in new ways this year due to the circumstances brought on by the coronavirus pandemic, the district must sustain instructional rigor and engagement that leads students to reach their full potential. Building relationships that strengthen academic and social emotional growth are key to addressing students' mental health needs and providing individualized support to address barriers and inequities. A strength of our district is the engaged community of excellent teachers, administrators, staff, students, and parents. I'm grateful to be a part of this community. And as an elected board member, I look forward to working together to ensure our district's success this year and beyond. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and to those of you watching, I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Next for your closing statement, Kelly Regan.
Thank you. Teachers, principals, students, you are all my hero right now. You have completely transformed not only what learning looks like, teaching looks like, and done so in such a short amount of time. You've put in dedicated hours outside of your day that probably nobody could have ever expected. And so I just want to take the time to thank you, and I want to be the voice of the community for the community that you represent, to be a good listener, to hear about the things that are going on in their lives, the challenges they're facing with distance learning and beyond. How can I help better serve you all as a community and as a school board member? As my heroes who have transformed their practice, we have to be, as a school board, committed to what your needs are. We have to listen. We have to provide the resources that you need to be able to be successful. We have to engage our students in real world learning so they're prepared to go on into the world for the jobs that are not even available yet. And we can do that as a school board member. We will help make that happen for you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your vote, and I look forward to November 3rd.
Thank you. Finally, Lucy Payne, closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for sticking out with us tonight. I encourage everyone to go out and vote on November 3rd. We are a very fortunate community that all the candidates tonight that are seeking election support our district, and not one of us is a single-issue candidate. We're all looking out for the best interest of our district. I've known and worked with everyone at this forum and can honestly say that I know any outcome of this board election will benefit our students. Public service oftentimes is a lot of work with low acknowledgement. I want to take this time to acknowledge each of you for putting yourselves forward for this most important work on behalf of our students and our community. I've enjoyed my time on the board. I feel we've done great work in our strategic planning, our response to COVID-19, and many other areas. I feel I'm knowledgeable at education and can continue to add value to the district by working collaboratively with other board members for a high-functioning board. I've worked to build relationships with district employees, community members, and other educational agencies. I've spent time in our schools observing the outcomes and impacts of the board work. I've learned so much from everyone. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank all of you. I have a couple of announcements. We will put all of our forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters White Bear Lake Area. And you'll also find links to those YouTube recordings on our website, You can request an absentee ballot now on the Secretary of State's website. And you can also go there to register to vote or update your registration. And that is at www.mnvotes.org. And you can also do those things when you go to vote in person. That ends our forum. Thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about the issues and for coming to run forward to run in the Matamita School Board race. Thanks to our volunteers and to viewers for watching and for your interest in becoming informed voters. Make your voice heard in the general election by voting by November 3rd. Thank you.